Good evening, and welcome to the October 8th meeting of the Planning Board. Before I start the roll call, Mr. Shepherd will be a full voting member tonight, and he can start the roll call.
Shepherd here.
App present.
Tessier here.
Friskel here. Also with us is Town Planner Vanessa Price and her illustrious zoning administrator, Jamie Jefferson. Next, item number three, view and approval of minutes from October 1st, 2024.
We didn't get minutes.
The comments?
I have no comments.
No comments, no comments.
We don't have minutes, they'll be heard at the next meeting.
Oh, okay. I guess we'll postpone that till the next meeting.
Yeah, the drafted meeting minutes were done, I think, yesterday, but we wanted to make, give you guys enough time so you'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll do it next time. Item number four, staff updates, featuring the Town Planner.
Just a couple of things about the training opportunities are coming up. I know a few of you, or a couple of you have signed up for the land use conference. I don't know why they do it on Saturdays, but it's a Saturday, so thank you for the two of you. Anybody else want to come, let me know. Also, within your packets, you'll see, and we'll also go it over when we do our zoning amendments discussion about the zoning amendment calendar to kind of keep us on track. We're trying to, we'll talk it under the zoning amendments. We're trying to get on a schedule earlier in case we have some later due to the consultant that we're hiring. I think that's all I have, unless there's any other questions from the board.
Thank you, Professor. Proceed to item number five, housing discussion. Our guest, Ryan Pope, Housing Navigator for the City of Dover. Welcome.
Wherever you feel most comfortable, if you want to sit at the table, you can.
Grab the mic.
But if you do, just grab the mic, please.
You guys, yourself prepared.
Is this, yep, it is. Hi, everybody. I'm Ryan Pope. I am an Assistant City Planner for the City of Dover. I was brought onto the team as part of the Invest New Hampshire Grant Program, specifically Housing Navigator Program. My job there is largely to engage with community members and work through kind of how we solve our city's housing challenges. And obviously, every community has housing challenges, they're all different, and the solutions aren't the same across the board. But there have been several of the kind of tools that we use that have kind of piqued interest in other communities, and I believe that is why I was brought here, was just to kind of discuss with you a couple of them and how we have utilized them, and then just kind of open it up for discussion from there. So the first thing that I always like to kind of preface with is Dover does things a little differently when it comes to how we define attainability or affordability, and the way we do that is by utilizing HUDJAR market. So when you talk about affordable housing, affordable housing is generally, people aren't spending more than 30% of their income on their housing expenses. Many workforce programs, many kind of light tech funding programs actually have income caps that allow people to kind of participate in units that are created this way. When it comes to the way we incentivize that housing, we don't look at tenant income as a function of that. What we do instead is every year HUD publishes what's called fair market rent. It's a 40th percentile rent calculation, so they do kind of a market assessment. The middle is 50th percentile, they look a little less to the 40th, and we end up with a sub, kind of a submarket number. And what we do, we have various incentives through the city to incentivize really density through various means, and in exchange for excess units, oftentimes, we'll try to negotiate in a permanent deed restriction to this level. So we know that in perpetuity, we will have units that are below market rate assessed annually by a third-party federal agency. So that's what the top page is on your report. It's just kind of a little glimpse of the last two years of what that looks like. Again, for us, we say that's the base rent without utilities, we don't get involved in that. We don't do any income verifications as the city, we don't require that landlords do income verifications, and we have no stipulations on tenant selection as part of the municipal process. We do that for a few reasons. One, there's a need for less expensive housing across the income spectrum, and we don't want to preclude people at kind of what we see as arbitrary income caps, and it lifts a lot of regulatory oversight from the city itself, so we don't have to be involved in the leasing process. So that's how we do it. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it has become my preference as I've been in this role, because it's very easy to manage for those reasons. So the primary way that we negotiate in those deed restrictions is through what's called our Transfer of Development Rights Program. And if any of you are familiar with kind of previous iterations and how that normally occurs, it is historically, a developer will purchase, well, essentially, there's a land swap transaction. So someone who has conservable land will kind of put it up to the city. The city will then have a developer who wants increased density in a place that can support that increased density, and there's some kind of transaction there where this land is conserved in exchange for density elsewhere through sending and receiving zones that are specifically identified. We have that on the books, but we've modified it substantially to the point where now we allow developers to actually purchase the rights to additional units with a direct contribution to our conservation fund. And what that does is it allows the conservation fund to be a little more discretionary in identifying what pieces of property, what areas of the city we want to conserve, and then we have funds available when it comes time to do that. Where affordability comes in, that works for, you can buy an unrestricted unit, we have, the price kind of scales down depending on the size of the unit as well, but the fee actually is $0 if someone is willing to create an additional rental unit that is priced at HUDJAR market forever. So that's kind of in a nutshell how that works. And again, it gets a little convoluted, it's easier to kind of see than it is to explain, which is why I have some pictures and base calculations and all kinds of stuff. But we can skip over the base calculation piece, that's just how we determine the base density of a parcel and when folks would have to purchase the additional units there. And then we have the unit fee schedule on that next page there, along with some pictures of units that were approved through this, what's essentially an overlay district throughout the city. So if you're doing an unrestricted unit, that's $15,000 per unit fee, and that is obviously no size restriction, works for single-family home, rental home, anything. 1,400 square feet kind of scales down, 1,000 square feet scales down even further. The village rate is mostly for, like if you think about a HUD or kind of community development that has like, you know, a grocery store, a gas station, things for people to live, work, and play at, that's kind of where that one comes into play. So if you think Point Place in and around the Dover area, that was utilized there, and then that HUDJAR market restricted is zero. The way we came up with that $15,000 figure is that is historically what one acre of land has cost to conserve based on historical assessments. We're in the process of reviewing that, that is remarkably low, given today's market. So we'll see what an unrestricted unit costs in the future, but for the time being, that is what it is. Any questions so far?
No? All right, cool.
Sitting for the end.
So the other piece that we find interesting with this is the process is a discretionary process at the discretion of the Planning Board itself. So any decision, the city's under no obligation to sell additional units, they're all project-specific, they're all context-specific, they're all neighborhoods, they're all contingent on kind of neighborhood character. And we find that that to be kind of the best way to kind of work through this process is by allowing Planning Board that kind of level of discretion and having this be an option everywhere, but not kind of an automatic option everywhere. So it's usually a two-step process where a developer will come with a concept, say, base density would be 20 units, I would like to do 30, 10 of them are going to be deed restricted in X number ways, how do you guys feel about that? And the Planning Board could decide how many units they're willing to sell, at whatever level they're willing to sell, and that approval kind of gets tied into the next phase of the project and the site review and all of that. People can do it at the same time, but rarely will you see someone come with fully engineered plans, they'll need to hear, no, I'm not going to give you the extra units, go back and try it again. So that's how we manage that bit of the process. And through this new methodology of rolling out that transfer development right process, we have approved an additional, it says hundreds of units, I actually checked a little earlier today, it's in the mid-3s, so 330-plus is what I had seen, and we've actually raised closer to $3 million for our conservation fund, which has allowed us to put 42 acres into conservation since we added this fee model, with another 20 that were under purchase and sale agreement, I think 15 of which have already been settled since I made this document in March. So it's a really neat way for us to really incentivize that additional density, again, where it makes sense. Obviously, you don't want to develop the entire town or the entire city, you want to make sure that you're promoting density to the point of profitability in areas that can support it. For us, that's generally where water and sewer connectivity is, and in exchange, you're raising funds to conserve land that you never want to see develop, so it's a nice balance. And then adding in that affordability component really is kind of a kicker there. And it was an agreement between the Conservation Commission to accept a $0 fee in order for the city to kind of place that permanent affordability deed restriction on there. So I have a couple sample projects, one of which most people have heard of at this point, it's all over the news, but the cottages at Back River Road, there are 44 tiny home units off of Back River Road, obviously, that parcel itself was roughly seven acres. And if you followed our kind of base zoning and open space subdivision yield, would have yielded nine single-family homes. Those probably would have been in the 5s, 6s, 7s, 8s even, between 2018 and now, when they've come up. But instead, we have 44 one-bedroom cottages, 100% of which are at that HUDJAR market rate. So basically, we allowed the developer to pitch this project with this amount of density. The Planning Board felt comfortable with it, and the developer actually paid nothing for the additional unit count, or for any of the unit count, because they agreed to deed restrict them in perpetuity at that HUDJAR market metric. So that has worked really well for us from just an affordability standpoint and just knowing that we now have units below market forever, regardless of who owns the property on that site. So in this particular case, benefits of that program was we ended up with 35 additional units. It's a cottage court development, which personally I love, just the houses facing into each other, kind of that neighborhood feel, porches, you can park out back. It's designed for people more than it's designed for cars, which is just nice from just a community perspective, and they're at that attainable rent rate forever. Now objectively, a more interesting project, well, objectively for me, objectivity means different things for different people, but for me, the next one that you'll see on here, I think is really interesting. So this one was just shy of eight acres, this was actually zoned rural residential, it's kind of behind the high school. And again, the subdivision yield would have given us about nine single-family homes, or whatever kind of unit you would want. But instead, what we were able to get with the Transfer of Development Right Program is the developer was able to construct a total of 31 total units, 13 of which are single-family residences that were size restricted to that 1,400-square-foot value, so you'll see they paid a little less of a fee than the unrestricted one, as well as four four-unit townhomes. Eight of the rental units there are deed restricted in perpetuity at that HUDJAR market rent for our workforce and just general folks who deserve to live within their means. And actually, one of those four-unit buildings was designed to look like a barn that came down during the redevelopment process, which was just a fun little value add to the project, so that the site kind of maintains that rural-ish feel. So here, benefits of TDR, you'll have those 22 additional units, you'll have a mix of housing stock, we have single-family homes, we have rental homes, we have attainable rental units. The site is really interesting from kind of a flow perspective. I think it was remarkably creative to see the way that these single-family homes and this multifamily complex kind of exist in the same neighborhood and don't feel, it doesn't feel like two different spaces. And we get periodic developer updates from this particular developer. He told us that one of the couples who moved into one of the HUDJAR market rates were testing out their relationship, and they have since become engaged, all because of Transfer of Development Rights. So he insists that I tell folks every time that that happens. So in a nutshell, Transfer of Development Right, it basically acts as a kind of an underlying zoning thing, it's an overlay, well, an overlay district that is discretionary in its application. Its focus is to really concentrate development where density makes sense, and it supports our community conservation and resilience goals at the same time. Besides that, fostering creativity in development, mixed-income neighborhoods, great variety of housing types, and again, and I cannot stress this point enough, when we talk about affordable housing and making sure, if we're trying to bring the cost of things down, the way that you're going to do that is a volume game. If you allow for an increase in density, you can concentrate development, you can allow a developer to build to the point of profitability at a lower price point, is what we're seeing here. So again, that increase in density allows developers to kind of trade off the affordable rents in exchange for being able to kind of have more of them to be an income generator for them. So that's this program and the HUDJAR market piece. So I can kind of open it up to the room for questions.
Thoughts?
I got lots.
You're going to be here all night.
Zoning administrators always have the most questions.
I guess my first question is, one, how does it benefit the town and how does it benefit existing residents? You mentioned about appropriate places, I mean, from being a Dover native, I don't see Back River Road being an appropriate place to expand. Some of the complaints I've heard about taking, going to the AG and taking back some conservation where you want to make more density, and neighbors and people who bought there are furious that they bought thinking there was X amount of conservation, and now they've got low-income housing. So that, do you feel a lot of pushback? I see a lot of pushback from Dover friends, and their biggest concern is that you're degrading a lot of these single-family neighborhoods with the low-income stock and the homeless crisis in Dover has exploded exponentially since kind of Dover's new push for low-income turned it into a Manchester.
Yep, so the low-income component is actually not a factor in any of these developments. They're priced at that price point, but we again, make no caveats or restrictions as to who can come and live there. Oftentimes, it's not people with housing choice vouchers, it's people in the general workforce who can't afford to live anywhere else. So we're trying to kind of incentivize that density across the board for folks, not choose winners and losers, not require that they be low-income neighborhoods, because that's not the goal. The goal is to have appropriately-priced units for many of our residents to live in. We have a situation in town where about 50% or so of our renter population pays more than 52% of their income on rent. And the run-on effects economically for that are that there's less for them to save for down payment on their home, there's less for them to go out and spend anywhere, at the bar, at the restaurant, kind of doing any normal thing. So it's trying to balance that approach in a way that kind of integrates neighborhoods so that they're not entirely low-income neighborhoods, like housing authority developments have been in the past, but kind of layered in, in a way like this. So I can tell you, just from experience, having visited and spent a fair amount of time at the cottages on Back River Road, there is a broad array of people living there. There are some folks who have experienced homelessness in the past, there are also teachers, there are also firefighters, there are also a lot of folks who work over at the assisted living facility that's owned by the folks who developed it. So I think a lot of that comes down to perception, and I can tell you, John and Maggie, the developers at the Cottage Project would be excited for anyone to kind of come visit, talk to them, meet the residents, and get a feel for that neighborhood.
Nice question. Thank you, Ryan, for coming. What does Dover, or more broadly, New Hampshire, what level of affordable housing, however you define that, is appropriate for each units, about each town? Do you have any sense of that?
I would say it's different for each community. For us, we're always analyzing data to identify where the need is and what the need is. And when we have half of our renters paying more than half of their income on housing, that is problematic. So this is a tool that we've identified to help address that. Again, it's going to be different demographically depending on the community, but you know, SRPC has all kinds of interesting information regarding demographic trends, what's going on in each community, they publish community profiles, and I would highly encourage folks to kind of dig into that to figure out what the need is here.
So what are you at today? Do you have any idea what percentage of your housing is affordable?
Oh, I would say I did an inventory relatively recently. So through this program, not a ton, but through various light tech programs, through housing authority projects, and through deployed housing choice vouchers, I'd say that by deed restriction or by financing agreement, that our income capped, we are at about 22% of our rental income stock is deed restricted in some way to affordability, be it HUDJAR market, or be it through some kind of light tech or housing authority project model.
I have a question. If, so what kind of problems do you see, or not problems, but if you were to do it over again, are there things that you, or not you necessarily, but that the program hasn't addressed that maybe should have been? Because I know that Barrington, we're coming now with like workforce housing applications and trying to figure out where our, not where our places, but how to handle them, and this was mentioned, the TDRs, but do you, I don't know what kind of issues that you may see that maybe can be rectified besides the, I know you said the cost of the acre share might not be as prominent, but is there any other things that you maybe think that you would have done differently?
There, yeah, there definitely are. I would say the size restricted component is something that we will likely change in the coming year or so. This program is great for creating affordable homes for rent. It is not great at creating affordable homes for purchase. Obviously, a 1,400 or 1,000-square-foot home is going to sell for less than a 2,500-square-foot home, so there's kind of that. But even the 1,400-square-foot homes, it's still a new build, it's still selling for $650,000, which is cheaper than $800,000, but again, isn't kind of meeting that need, and it's not providing kind of an in for folks to kind of get their first home and build that equity and all those things. So what we're exploring now is kind of a model to incentivize affordable homes for purchase, and using similar, a similar kind of approach to what we have for the HUDJAR market rent piece, is looking at what New Hampshire Housing publishes every year, where they'll say what someone making 80% of area median income or 100% of area median income can afford for a sales price, and that's based on obviously interest rates, market conditions, all those things, and figuring out a way to kind of price-fix those houses to that metric so that they can be initially acquired for that, and so that when they're resold, they're sold at a rate that is truly affordable within the community. We're still working through a lot of that language, but that's kind of the thought process now. Again, trying to alleviate that whole income qualification component and trying to pick and choose who gets to live where. If the home is affordable and it's restricted to be affordable, then our hope is that that will help alleviate some of these concerns on the homeownership side.
Are you concerned about the impact from a tax-based standpoint on that and what that will do to the municipal tax base as time goes on?
So not, not through this particular program, and the reason for that is because any unit that is created through the Transfer Development Right process is a unit that wouldn't have existed already. So the thought process there is that even if we are kind of deed restricting the value of this property, that that's taxable revenue that we wouldn't have had anyway.
Right, but the impact of that, Mike, I guess why I'm asking is the impact of that taxable revenue, it affects police, fire, your school system, your water, sewer, pick any one of your municipal impacts, so there is a cost associated with every one of these additional residents, and have you evaluated what that is and what that looks like on a modeling basis for long?
Yes, so we do reassess the, specifically the water sewer investment fees and things like that. We actually, after reviewing our impact fees, we just had a report commissioned to kind of look into that. The Planning Board has made a decision to pause those for the foreseeable future because the amount that we were collecting from projects actually wasn't being expended at the rate that we were collecting it at. So we were a little overzealous in what we were anticipating when it came to community impact on that front. When it comes to the school piece, we actually just participated in New Hampshire Housing's school enrollment study to determine kind of what the true impact is of new housing creation on school enrollments, and we have found that per unit, I think we're at .12, I think it's .12, students contributed to the school system. Our enrollments are coming down, like I think they are everywhere, and there's a lot of hard costs kind of fixed in already, like we have the new high school, we're not going to have to build a new one anytime soon because we have fewer students coming in. So thinking through all of that and what the true impact is, interestingly enough, communities will find that the big revenue generator from a, from a school standpoint is multifamily housing. They tend to have, contribute fewer children to a school system and tend to generate higher tax revenues. So I just found that fascinating when I read the report.
Have you seen this study? It's actually interesting, I looked at a number, I've forgotten what the few cities were, they've looked at it, it sort of tracks to what we have. The, you know, sort of middle cost, 400 to 700,000 dollars for us, I imagine, is where all the kids are, and the high, single-family, they found, single-family homes had more kids, but if you have a more expensive single-family home, they tend to have fewer kids, and that's exactly what I'm seeing up on Signal Drive.
The Harvard Housing Study?
No, I've forgotten what this was, I got it through.
Yeah, this was, New Hampshire Housing actually commissioned it, and they just published it last month, towards the end of last month. So it's a brand-new report, Dover was lucky enough to contribute all of our data, CO information to that study, which is really handy for us from a data perspective to kind of have that kind of in our back pocket.
It's especially useful for us because they were really only looking at big sort of cities, not small towns like us, so it's hard to do an exact extrapolation.
There were, I think there were two, two smaller towns in there and two cities that they had looked at, so there's an interesting cross-section there.
Going back to the TDR, is there like a minimum acreage or lot size?
Not currently.
Or can be any, any size?
Yep, and it's all, yeah, no, there's nothing, nothing like that. It's all, and it's all going to be project-specific. So for us, it is measuring kind of the contextuality of a neighborhood, where it fits, is it close to public transit, is it walkable, is there a sidewalk, are there contributions, other contributions being made in the community to kind of warrant that increase in density, and then kind of moving forward from there.
Okay.
And every one of these is tied into city water and sewer?
Yes, that actually is a requirement for any of the increased density components through this program, is connectivity to water sewer. But in other places, I'm sure there are arguments that could be made for community septic, if it's going to be kind of a four-unit multifamily that's going to get condoized or something like that, where only two units would be allowed, or I'm sure there's some, there's some wiggle room, again, case-by-case discretionary process, but that would be up to kind of any planning board body to decide where and if that makes sense for the area that's being proposed.
What was the rationale for not doing income based when, you know, to prevent people with higher incomes from benefiting from them?
A lot of it comes down to trust. We trust that our, the developers who take advantage of this program know kind of the goal is to support our workforce and kind of move ahead with that way. This metric also ties in nicely with existing light tech programs, so if someone did come to propose a light tech program, it wouldn't conflict with this HUDJAR market metric, which is handy. So it kind of works in parity with that. The reason we don't really want to target it is because that need exists across the income spectrum. And again, kind of the picking winners and losers or identifying a unit as a low-income unit or a person as a low-income person isn't helpful in the long run. Obviously, there's a need for that type of housing, and there are supports out there that kind of can support that type of housing, and they work nicely within this, within this metric. So it was really an effort to lift municipal oversight of the program and to drive that point home with our developing partners that kind of, this is the need, this is the goal, when you're selecting tenants, this is kind of what we're looking for, we're going to trust that you're going to do that. And we find that to be the case. A lot of people who can afford, you know, a $4,500 three-bedroom apartment in the Orpheum aren't drawn to 300 and some square-foot cottages off Back River Road, it's just a different needs base. But again, if someone is willing to live smaller, be smaller, and they can get into a unit like this, and they're completely happy with that, who's the city to say, you can't do that?
No questions? Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
For coming all the way out here.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
Do you want to ask?
Questions? Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yeah, you bet.
Questions? Since we do have public here.
We'll open this to public.
Oh, thank you very much.
Do you like the thing?
I don't even know what you're talking about. I assume it was some kind of dense, high density housing?
Just a high density concepts or higher density concepts.
From Dover.
I mean, it's a little bit, yes, so. Zero.
Yep.
None. What you're offering.
Well, thank you for your public comment. Is anybody online?
Is there any, anybody online that would like to ask any questions to our guest speaker this evening? I'm seeing nobody on the line.
It's quiet out there in TV land.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You bet. Absolutely. And feel free to reach out anytime if you have questions about what we're working on here. All right.
Thank you.
All right, this leads us up to item number six, zoning amendments.
Okay, so we're going to kind of keep on track tonight to go through each one of the proposed amendments. These were previously discussed at the previous work session on the 17th of September, if I have that right, oh, I'm sorry, 3rd of September. So we'll just go one by one. If anybody has any questions or comments or discussion. If there's a consensus to move forward, we'll have the attorney formulate the ballot questions. And then we will anticipate trying to have a first public hearing, at least for these zoning amendments, on Tuesday, November 19th. I do, I would like to also mention before we get started that the subcommittee met today for the potential additional zoning amendments. And we may have more, more public hearings than just the first public hearing based on those results from that. Is there anything you want to add about that, John, about what we talked about today?
No.
I know half of us were here. Okay. Yeah, so there may be additional ones in addition to this, but these are ones that were carried over perhaps from last year or discussions throughout working this year. So the first one is the maximum building size. And for 4.2, 0.2, parentheses five, the conditional use permit, or I'm sorry to take out. As you see in your paper, the non-residential structure should not exceed a footprint of 50,000 in square feet in size, everything after of it to be removed. As discussed before, the, our town attorney had indicated that a conditional use permit is inappropriate for this land use control. And if it is in the village district, that it could be appropriately applied to the zoning board of adjustment. I have an explanation here if anybody wants to add anything to it. If not, you're not, like I said, you're not voting right now if you're for or against it necessarily. But these are all in reference that the boards supported them, majority supported, to move forward. So is there any discussion on this or have any corrections? Or are we good with how this is going?
Good with that one.
I'm going with, I know. So consensus moving forward, we'll have the attorney look, formulate that one. The next one is nursing facility density in the general residential district on the table of use change. The proposed change is in the general residential district under nursing facility to add the footnote 15 and to, and permit it as a right.
I thought that was going to stay CP, conditional use, because it's in the residential area.
So why would we ever, ever agree to that? That is a horrible idea.
So keep it CP as it is now.
I honestly don't even think it should be allowed. It belongs in, we, we permitted it in village, town center, regional commercial, and CP'd it for highway commercial district overlay. It has no business in neighborhood residential or general residential.
So we will make that a slash, not allowed.
That's just my opinion on it.
You second that opinion?
Okay, do you want to go down, is there any other further discussion on it? Do you have this, issues?
Okay, it seems to be semi.
So not to move forward with that one?
So that will carry a slash in the.
That means, wait.
In the, in the.
So you want it not permitted, I'm sorry.
Not permitted, which is a slash. A dash, a slash or a dash?
And then I need an explanation as to why?
Inappropriate for neighborhood, for general residential?
Here, we can jump right to the very next one.
Okay.
Which, which the explanation aligns perfectly with the zone's general residential statement and purpose. The general residential district preserves the character of the opportunities for low density residential development and traditional subdivisions. And a nursing facility does not align with the character of a residential development and traditional subdivision.
Traditional subdivision. So I guess you agree with me when I think.
So you use that as same explanation. It sounds like that would make sense.
When we get to the next one, multi-family housing.
Let's stick with this one.
Oh, okay.
So the explanation for, that you have for the next one, the board's in consensus of how, how to describe that change in the article? Is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
The explanation, he just read.
Yep, okay. So now we're onto the multifamily.
Were you striking conditional use in neighborhood residential?
Yeah, so yes. No, wait.
Yes.
Both of them?
I would, yeah, I would.
I would agree, all right.
I would agree.
Okay, so make sure I have it right because I'm the one that's responsible for this.
So it's a dash for both of those items? Dash, dash. But when you only got, they've only got what, six beds or?
That's where, but Pond Hill, I believe, is in the high, that, that one's in the highway commercial district overlay, which is a CP, which is perfectly acceptable.
And to the next one.
Highway overlay, yeah. Yeah, it is within the highway overlay district.
Okay.
The multifamily.
Multifamily.
Are you going now?
Right now.
I'm going to turn over to Donna. Good.
Item number six, footnote number six.
Do you want me to tell you about the corrections before then?
Okay, go ahead.
Are you ready to, okay. The multifamily, and I'll let you do it.
Okay. At the last meeting, I wanted, in the general residential, to restrict it not to eight units, but to four units. And that's why it carries that new footnote 19. Now, going what you just said, would you like also that to be applicable to the neighborhood? Where you're trying to keep low density subdivision type housing?
Yes.
Yeah, you think, okay.
What about the village?
Density doesn't change, is the number of units in a building correct?
Well, that's another issue. I thought it was some confusion that I probably generated. That maybe you would only be allowed one four unit building.
So the footnote language would change and say one structure that contains up to four dwelling units.
Allow only one unit, one four unit in the.
But I don't know if that.
300 acre parcel.
It's not going to restrict the density.
Well, again, we would invite them to do a subdivision instead of multifamily housing. I think that's the point. People look around, they see all little houses, and then they see one of these buildings out here practically, and it just doesn't fit. I mean, we're here to get opinions, but.
That's why I thought that the four provides a little bit more control as far as a nicer look.
Yeah.
To create, you know.
Well, they're having the four and the 80 units over there. That look is not going to be too happy when everybody sees when it's done.
Well, that density has changed.
It'd be pitchforks and.
Unfortunately afterwards, but you know.
Yeah. So how do we want to do it in those two districts?
I mean, when you look at the general residential requirement anyway, if you, you'd have to have what, almost 10 acres to, to put in a four unit building?
Yeah, to get to the 80,000 per.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, you've got to have some fairly.
But if you had the 20 acres he's talking about, you could have like four buildings, I think.
Those lots with, with limited road frontage to then have all road frontage four unit buildings, you know, or internal subdivision roads, but. Right, you'd have to, theoretically, you'd have to do an internal subdivision road. Otherwise, you would have none, your lots would not conform to the dimensional requirements.
Right.
Construction wise would be, well, there's not a big demand for that, I don't think, is there? Multifamily like that?
This guy.
Well, yeah, well, I don't know. It might take them 10 years to build that out, who knows?
I don't think it'll take that long, once it starts.
Which, which one's that?
The 80 units, you mean?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The other, other ones, they didn't even advertise across some middle school. They, they sold it.
They have a waiting list.
2,700 bucks a month, so.
And that one, that's another good example where, and, and I didn't catch it until after. If you look at like the units that face the roadside, they're three stories tall, but fit in an area that's deemed to no more than two and a half, so. You know, we just, every once in a while, miss one, one of these slides through.
Yeah, one slid through Winkley Pond, but we kind of reduced the size. And that red barn that they're going to build came from this.
Yeah, I knew, I knew exactly what they're talking about. But that's another one where, and that's a conver, one of the conversations that I'd, I was having around that is where you look at, where we changed the rule to say contiguous uplands dictates the size because they got the density in there by not using contiguous upland. They were just based on upland. And it was upland that really is inaccessible because it's way in the back and you would need a wetlands crossing permit to get to it. And I almost feel like if somebody wants to use density, like in that regard, they should have to file and get the permit for that density. It is, that's a whole other item to tackle, but that ensures that people aren't just.
How do we want to proceed on this?
Well, it's not misusing, it's using what was agreed upon years prior. You know, when, when someone came up with that zoning ordinance, they thought it was a great idea and it was, you know, the most appropriate way to use the, your land, their land, whoever's land. So I mean, to have changes of opinion is perfectly acceptable and who would do this change?
Two steps, now you mentioned at one point, if you had, you would just like to see the maximum of four units across any of the multifamily. You said that the other day.
I, I would like to restrict four units per building.
Per building?
Yeah.
That would, so we could proceed just by putting the new footnote in all the way across.
I just think four is better than the other one with eight and 10 units in a building. I just, it does not contribute to a nice.
So even before we restrict anything, we want to put footnote 19 in across the board, which is four units. Is that true? Even in the village?
I think so. I think it just looks.
All of the zoning districts.
All zoning.
I mean, that's my opinion, just throwing it out there. Because I just think it, it gives the board some more flexibility to rearranging units.
Except the one that has 13, because that can be a PUD. So get rid of the six and put 19 in.
19, but keep the 13.
Yeah. Want to cause other troubles. And now we go back to, do we want to restrict it in the residential neighborhoods? Which is my thought that people would prefer to be in the single family neighborhood, which the zoning actually in the general calls for. The neighborhood one says you can have more density.
Well, I can say.
Well, that's why I always argue for more zoning districts or a little bit more.
Go to zoning where it describes each of the districts. That would be on page.
Just, I, we brought up the PUD earlier about the, the four in a PUD or in the, you know, mixed use rather.
Yeah.
I think that, I don't think that that's appropriate for mixed use. If you have a mall building or, you know, buildings on the bottom, I don't know as though limited to four up top is, is appropriate. Because it's a different type of development. It's not a residential development.
So you want to, so.
Well, it says lived, empty neighborhood.
So PUD, you would like to, in the town center, you'd like to leave it at six, eight units?
I want to be careful not to say eight units like.
And they got relief to go to town, right? From this ZBA?
But, I mean, I don't want, I, I just, I want, I would prefer to see it just in the, in mixed use buildings. Where you do the second story mixed use building, that you could have unlimited units upstairs based on what you do downstairs. You know, as opposed to townhouses that are 10 wide, you know? That was, that was my intent and opinion.
So town center, leave it at parentheses six?
You're still, based on your density though.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Or the units at the top.
Correct.
Six?
Six means eight units, parentheses, footnote six.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see.
Page 95.
I think the footnote six says like for eight units.
Eight, yeah.
Eight, right.
In a building.
Yep. So right now it's eight. And we're going to change it in a couple of them to four. General residential, neighborhood residential, village, and highway commercial. The question is, what do we do at town center and regional commercial?
What town center is like where we're trying to focus the.
Yeah. So that would be the PUD and dimension and everything. Well, I'm trying to see.
I, I would say keep it.
Keep it?
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to go back to parentheses six on that one.
Six and 13, okay.
Six and 13. Excuse me. Regional commercial and highway overlay, keep that at nine, footnote 19, which would be four. That sound good?
I think regional commercial, we're getting into mixed use again.
So you want to keep that at six also? Okay. Back to general residential, neighborhood residential on page five.
Sorry, with highway commercial overlay, how do you want to handle that one?
Right. Well, I'd say keep it at six, which is eight units. Oh, highway commercial.
Highway commercial is your.
Yeah.
Right.
I always think that highway commercial, like a lot of the, a lot of the other ones mentioned, require a conditional use permit because then you're in neighborhoods all the way along. 202, you know, up along the, you know, very rural areas of 202.
Right.
I don't want to be plopping the big.
Eight unit in there, yeah. I, I would think you would want to limit that density.
That would be four?
I think you should.
Okay. So this. I would rewrite six to say four units, except in misused developments, you can have unlimited.
She's going to write it. I wouldn't use the word unlimited.
Limited to density.
At the discretion of the planning board, how about that?
We got hammered up before they agree.
That's a campground or Dears Lake. They could come in and say, we don't have camp anymore. We just want to put housing along.
Right. How many three quarters of a million dollar condos would you stuff in along?
Right.
As many as you can.
Right.
As many as you can. They have what, 13, 16 acres or something?
Yeah, but with shoreline, wetlands, setbacks and.
I mean, I would, I just think your highway commercial overlay should be follow the footnote 19 rule.
All right, I agree with that.
That's my, my opinion.
I'll second that. So that goes to 19.
Okay, so we have 19, just for me, general residential or GRNRV and HCO are all changing to note 19. And everything else is staying as it is.
Town center and RC stay at eight.
Or like how it's right now.
It's number six, yeah. Now, we.
And then do you want to amend the footnote number six?
Did Jamie's word?
Oh.
Yeah, are you guys, oh, I think they're looking at something.
They're looking up the districts, I think.
I want to revisit. I would, I think.
I think they're concerned about the highway, well, the highway overlay.
We were just going over that. Yeah, I, I mean, I'd change them all to four. And then on the next page where it says mixed use developments, that's where you could put in a footnote for the eight. Does that make sense? Because those are all, we're talking about now for all single family dwellings, multifamily, you know, right?
Yep.
Multifamily dwellings.
Multifamily housing, under residential, not under commercial use.
Right.
So the commercial use is the mix.
Right, so I, I think change them all to four because you can't do residential in town center without the mixed use component, right?
Right.
Change it all to four. And then if you come in for a mixed use, which you have to in the town center, then the mixed use thing, you put a note for more units.
And then it's inconsistency. And then it's inconsistency, you'd want those two to match, wouldn't you?
No, because you can't do residential detached in town center without the mixed use, it's like, you think of.
But we're talking about multi-family housing.
And multi-family housing is permitted by in-town center. And it's not a conditional use, it's a permitted use.
So under residential.
It is.
Be a multi-family.
It no structure, it may contain, and.
The town center, okay, and the regional commercial, you have to have mixed use.
It is footnoted for eight units in town center and, and then the the P U D, right? And based on a twenty-foot dense, twenty thousand square foot lot density, stuff a lot of units in there.
True. Okay, how about?
Are we changing it or not?
Well, let's hold that until he's doing research here.
Because you guys like, kind of go off in different directions, and it's hard for me to help sometimes.
Let's get back to, everybody went to page five to see what it says, and how are we gonna treat those in the general and neighborhood residential?
Where are we going?
Yeah.
We're on page five, because Andy was explaining the difference in the description of what those two indicate. Uh, general residential district tend to provide opportunities for low-density residential development in traditional subdivisions, although clustered conservation subdivision permitted. Neighborhood residential is to promote medium-density residential development in the central portion of the town. So, we want to treat them separately then, or not? Because they're, represent like, what, ninety percent of the town, these two districts?
Yep. And, I mean, honestly, in general residential, I would think you'd almost make the argument that you would have no multi-unit in there.
I would agree with that, anybody else?
I'm I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent locked in on that, I'm just saying you could easily make that argument.
Yeah, I am locked in on it, I don't know if I can convince anybody, what do you think?
Yeah.
Keep it.
So general residential.
One family or two-family housing, which allowed in any district, that's essentially it.
So you would scratch the multi-family housing from the general residential?
I would put a slash through that like we did on the previous page for nursing facilities.
And you're saying allow it in the neighborhood residential?
Yeah, with the footnote nineteen, four units.
Right.
How's that sound?
As a conditional use permit?
Uh, yeah, conditional use permit, yeah.
For for neighborhood residential, but not allowed in general residential, is what.
That's gonna get a.
Is that a consensus from everybody?
Why the difference?
Because as the description is, that one is low-density residential development in traditional subdivisions, that's two-two, two-point-two, one, and then two-two-two is promote medium-density residential development in the central portion of the town. So there are, that's the difference, and would. Now, somebody said maybe they're putting in too many four-unit things, could we restrict the number of them, or that's just, that's already decided in zoning now, how many they could put in there, right, so.
Based on contiguous uplands.
If they, yeah, I know that's gonna be hit.
I agree, John.
Because of the last change we made, it's gonna, can, uh, wetlands change, the old hydroic A and B, we'd restrict them now, so. Which would, that probably would have affected handbone, right? And the last, maybe we've lost two units.
I don't think you would have gotten more than two units in that property if you had.
It could be.
We had the contiguous uplands.
Right.
It was already changed.
Okay, so do we agree on, one, two, Bob?
What do we agree on?
You don't get a vote.
I know, I understand the language, I don't know what we're changing.
National residential, because it's different than neighborhood, not allowed at all.
Not allowed at all. Multi-family, getting rid of general residential, got you.
Okay, three to two, three to one, okay.
All right, the only, the only comment I have on that is I, that I would be cognizant of, where you could have a four-unit building with a nice hunk of land, you, you end up almost pushing somebody to a subdivision, to subdivide it and make a four, five, six unit, or a conservation, they're gonna put, you, we all know what they're gonna do, they're gonna put a conservation subdivision in with three units off of one driveway, and then a separate one off to the side.
Which I'd prefer a single-family housing than a four-unit, any day, but.
Me too, yeah.
As opposed to a four-unit on.
In a, in a little street that's full of little capes.
I'm a firm believer that single-family houses and homeownership contribute to a nicer town than.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Multi-family rentals, but. Why do you not agree?
No, I I just wasn't sure, but after hearing discussion, I'd probably be persuaded to do that.
Okay, good, all right, I think we'll consensus.
Yep.
So no in general residential?
No, no.
C P in nineteen and N R, C P nineteen and village.
Yeah.
Keeping town center as it is, R C as it is, and highway commercial overlay district, six to note footnote nineteen.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Everybody?
And then the footnote to say one structure contains up to four dwelling units.
Yeah.
So they could do less dwellings.
Yeah, no more.
No more than.
So do no, no more than, instead of up to?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, in town center, you have to do, residential has to be part of a P U D, or, just to go back and touch that real quick, uh, non-residential use, any residential use has to be part of a P U D or mixed-family structure.
Okay.
But because, because we have developers and engineers that like to come before us and wordsmith everything, where we have four dwelling units, is there any shot they're gonna come in and say, okay, there's four dwelling units, and I want this hair salon and this other unit? Like, I'm looking for two other units.
I use dwelling units, because that's what it is used for the eight number, so I was keeping it consistent.
Put it at dwelling unit.
I'm just thinking about, will they try and?
Well, they will try anything, that's why we took twenty-three months to handle one subdivision recently. I won't say we wore them down.
Okay, okay, so we're moving forward, um, minimum lot size for conservation subdivision. Um.
I don't know.
This would discuss to, to increase the lot size to thirty thousand square feet, to coincide with D E S recommendation, recommended lot size.
Yeah, that's the whole thing that I, I guess I was pushing down originally.
In the subcommittee group, I know that it was talked to maybe table this one and have the consultants look at this, because they're also gonna be looking at potential other changes.
This is where that came from.
Yeah, I was curious.
To the conservation subdivision.
And, but that's only with perfect sandy soil and certain conditions, and as you can see, each, each time you change the soil and the slope, and that's slopes less than eight percent, so it's not a flat D E S thirty thousand, it really changes, so.
Well, and I was looking, if you look under six seventy-four parents, or colon twenty-five, which they refer to as interim zoning ordinances, when nothing exists in place, they use forty thousand square feet is the minimum lot size.
Yeah, and looking at the one that we just passed, that mostly, we're just putting all those units on that gingerbread lane. I guess if you increased it by a third, you'd lose a third more conservation land from what we, you know, just to go up from twenty to thirty, most of those are twenty, twenty thousand to twenty thousand five hundred.
And so one of the things that with these conservation subdivisions comes in, that's actually been concerning to me, but has not seen, but, and I don't know how that kicks off with D E S, is when you look at it, they're taking the well radius for this, and it encompasses multiple lots.
Yeah.
Into it, so.
But they no longer, they no longer need an easement, apparently, I think the law had changed.
Right, so you're, right, but like, you're affluent, so now you've got your affluent that's on, on your, on your lot, and you've got a well ra- you've got well radiuses that encompass two or three lots in some cases.
Well, it crosses the road practically to the guy across the street, so you're getting all of that, whatever's flushing down the side, in the swales, down the hill.
Got to believe the science, man. They take, they take affluent capacity from a mile away and do calculations, it makes no sense to me, but they say they do.
So do you guys want the consultants to look at this? This one, I know that's kind of what we talked about today, but one thing we support.
Yeah, that was on the consultant's list to talk about thirty thousand, going to thirty thousand, yeah, we can let them look at it.
Can I, uh, I'll let Connor know, but do you mind, like, following up with him at the meeting, because I'm not.
Oh, on Thursday?
No, I'm not gonna be there either, so on Thursday.
You're not gonna be there?
I'm not there till ten, ten fifteen, and then I'm gonna go beyond.
Okay, so I'm just gonna say that we're not moving this forward, but we're interested in changing this regulation, um, but want the consultants to take a look at it, since they're also taking looks, they're taking a bigger look at the conservation subdivision as a whole, too.
I mean, and my question was, should it be forty thousand?
Okay, I'll put it on there.
Which, I mean, really, when you think about it, it's a two hundred by two hundred square foot lot, it's not that big.
It's pretty much, these lots are generally forty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bigger.
Which they're a little bit more appropriate, they're sized well, they give people a little.
Although Jamie brought up a good point that.
Space for a pool and a shed.
Yeah.
Jamie brought up a point that there's no green break between them, you know, trees or bushes or anything, you know?
Don't worry, they'll take care of that as they get.
They get tired of looking at the guy next door.
Yeah, there're gonna be fences and trees.
You know, I'd say to Joe, one of the things that you can do to improve the conservation subdivision, in my opinion, is do replanting on the property borders, you know, that they've got to replant every border with, you know, six-inch tall of trees.
Make that a consideration of approval, you mean?
Ten-foot, you know, no touch, you know, part of your conservation has to be a ten-foot strip between each lot, as your calculation that, so the homeowners know you can't do anything in there, they'll dump their leaves and sticks, but.
But if we would go, if we were to go to forty thousand square feet, first of it, you can increase the frontage to a hundred feet, and then maybe put a twenty-foot setback, well, it's twenty now, isn't it, in thirty-foot conventional? Just, so the twenty and twenty, that forty feet.
There's so many ways you can massage it, I mean, you can do smaller frontages, so you decrease road length, but then make the setbacks wider at the building setback line, like on a Young Road was using, so then it forces the house to the back of the lot, because they have to have that setback, you know, you need a hundred and fifty-foot setback, but you only need seventy-five-foot road frontage, so you can have less roads, but then you force the house to the back, you know, it gets complicated, but it's, there's tools to tweak that stuff, you know, that might make it look better and more appealing to people. Um, and then the replantings, and like you'd said, you know, a green buffer in the front, that's a tough one, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah, residential, I'm not too concerned about that, unless, well, in the, you know, I guess I am. We're going to a hundred, yeah, not for a lot, though, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep us on track here for the, that leads into the next one with the perimeter buffer. We can also have the consultant look at this, too, for further discussion if you'd like, or if this is something that you want to move forward.
Well, there seemed to be a lot of consensus increasing that roadside buffer.
And you're really only counting that on the main.
On the frontage.
On the frontage.
Frontage, yeah.
I, I will say, one of the things that was concerning to me, and I'll, I'll use, you know, now that we're done and we've approved Young Road, when you look at the setback buffer, the side setback buffer in adjacent to a neighbor, I'll tell you, I would be pretty upset being the neighbor that's right there, which all of a sudden, now you're gonna have all these houses running right around, you had a beautiful wooded lot, where you didn't have anybody, and now you've got virtually no buffer, and you're gonna end up with twelve or thirteen houses that pretty much come up around you and loop in, that's, it's terrible.
But I struggle with the buffer being on not your own lawn, if you want to buffer, you plant trees on your lot that don't cut your trees, some of them cut their trees right to the edge of their property line, expects the neighbor to provide the buffer.
But I don't, I don't think that's the case here, if you look, they have a, like, if you look at the lots surrounding there, it's a fairly well-forested lot, the challenge is they sit up a little higher up on a knoll, so everything they have looks right down into this develop, what this proposed development that we approved.
Right, the opposite address number one thirty-four, I think, but beyond that, it does drop down, though.
Right.
To create a regulation that.
The neighbors right there, it just.
Right, but to create a like regulation that considers every type of topography and layout, I mean, you know, Paul's other one, where he's in someone's backyard, it's like, I wouldn't live up here, because, you're, you're in someone's, everyone's in someone else's backyard, you know, I wouldn't like that, to try to write a regulation that considers everybody else's backyard as protected.
All I'm trying to say is, on it, you have to have some sort of buffer that in, that keeps your, your, your intent is to keep people's privacy somewhat intact, especially in a rural community. I'm not saying you gotta go like buck wild.
Right. No, and we were discussing that earlier, you know, between Sherborne and Deer Ridge, developers chose not to clearcut every lot.
Right.
They cleared just enough to put a foundation in, in a driveway, and that was it, and most people left them that way, and they've got beautiful wooded lots.
Right.
A developer today that wants to go in there and wipe out every tree, you know, the whole subdivision, before he goes in there and recontours the entire thing, it's a different practice, unfortunately, you know, and hopefully they go back to.
But I think a lot of that's because of conservation. Because everything's being clustered into one spot, you have no choice but to clearcut.
Yeah, and then we were saying that, they what, preserve almost a hundred and twenty acres here, and that's attached to almost six hundred acres heading toward the Edbury lot, really creates a big useful.
They would have been better off just using a hundred and twenty-eight and spreading the houses out, I know we could still get six hundred.
But, but again, I don't agree.
That doesn't matter, you get to the six hundred, though, you keep.
Having all those acres.
Everybody having sterile lungs that don't contribute anything to a good ecosystem, right?
Yeah.
Just grass instead of, you know, things that attract butterflies and dragonflies and hummingbirds.
If you go through Sherborne where I live, there are a lot of butterflies.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're in a good old wooded area, these guys just come in.
Go ahead.
Cut down, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Why even have conservation land that is locked in and nobody from the town can get it? I mean, if you were to have conservation, if we were to say all conservation land has to be behind the house and not accessible, people wouldn't agree with that either, right, it's like, it it's not of much use to people.
It's not the people, it's the environment, the intent of the conservation subdivision was to conserve the environment, not concern, you know?
It's not to be playland for people.
And there's benefits for people, but it was for connectivity for wildlife to traverse the new development, so they don't get cut off from wooded areas. You know, so people were the last consideration, and, you know, for, yes, for conservation, or else it would be, you know, developed into a.
In true conservation, people shouldn't be allowed to walk.
Come on, you've got, you've got all these.
No, and I agree, and that's why it's happening.
And there's different levels.
To Jamie's point.
That was the intent, you know?
The three thousand ninety percent. Use that's open to people to walk through, they're getting the discount, recreation discount, or, you know, walking, skiing, snowshoeing, hunting, fishing, anybody can go on those problems.
That's okay, I'm gonna reel this back in, um, that's okay, what about the, so do we want to go with how this is worded, or do we also want to have the consultant look at it, since they're looking at the, as a whole?
Yeah, well, yeah, since it's part of the conservation subdivision.
Even though that the board.
Oh, we wedded to the hundred and fifty front.
Want, want to keep the hundred and fifty, but have that as part of it?
On the street side.
I, I like the idea of having it setback in.
I do, too. All right, keep it.
I think you should move forward on it.
Move forward with this one, okay.
Move forward on that.
Seems to be the current taste, I think it's worth moving forward.
Um, the next one, has to do with the shoreline protection district, septic systems, Ron, um, this is one that Ron had introduced, he did want me to let, to note to the board that there could be some issues with classics private roads as well with this new language, and he just wanted the board to think about that while we discuss that tonight.
Well, Ron refuses to read the state law on septics, you know, and I don't know as though he can, I mean, it's worth a try to put it to the lawyer to see what we can do, but I don't know, you know, any increase in living space requires a new design, and if it's not a state-approved septic that's less than twenty years old, you know, and, and well, with the new real estate laws for transfer, they have to do an inspection, and it's now on the burden of the buyer to replace the septic if it's found in failure, and, you know, I don't know. I, I, it'd be interesting to put it to somebody to see if it's legal to requ- that you can do it, and, you know, I think it would. And, you know, I think it would protect the lakes if we can do something.
You wanna wait till Ron's back, too?
That's the board's decision to do this. He asked to propose it, um, as written to, for the board to consider. If the board would like to wait until he gets back, that would be your decision, not mine.
Is it appropriate to ask the lawyer if it's legal before we waste a lot of time on it?
That's what I was thinking. It should go to the attorney, right?
Yeah. Because she says it is. I don't think it's a bad thing, but...
If you guys support it, the consensus to move forward, you can ask her.
Get, uh, get LSM's opinion on this.
And if she says yes, then we're okay to move forward for...
Yeah, sure.
Yes?
Yes.
Or do you want it to come back?
Is it a yes?
I'm going with nods as we're gonna move it forward if she says yes. Okay. Um, the next, or the last two are pretty easy. Well, come on, easy. Um, steep, a new, or a definition for steep slope. Um, I know it was discussed before, when people come in and how do we enforce it?
Well, this is just to get it in the language.
Yep.
This will allow us, if we decide ever to put regulations in.
I was looking...
What I might do is with, uh, when we get to subdivision regulations, for example, uh, require them to delineate where they are, just so it's, shows up easier, they hand us these plot plans where the steeper slopes are.
I was looking somewhere and I can't, I don't remember.
This came again from the state, um, but they define, this is the definition the state uses on the publication. If any of you're similar. So, that's all. Just add that to our definitions.
I was looking at one of the state regs, and I don't remember which one it was. But they were specifically talking about, um, slopes and that they actually had a defining characteristic of any slope that was with a, oh, I think it was a length of forty feet or more, where they defined, and is part of how they defined a steep slope, where the transition occurred over more than forty feet.
Yeah.
Dictated its slope.
From New Hampshire State?
Yeah, I, I came across it and I was like, oh, I'll have to make note of that. And then I didn't write it down. I was like, I'll just come back to it, but I didn't. Now I don't remember where I read it from.
I just wanted to get it as a definition, that's all. You're not proposing a zoning amendment or anything.
Well, this is a zoning amendment to add it to the definition.
Right, yeah, right, that's, yeah, that's...
Good to have definitions.
Well, you know what I mean.
Yeah.
It's not gonna create any problems for anybody.
Andy, were you talking about, like, steep slope and ridgeline protection?
It, it may have been. It was, I, I remember looking at it. I was, when I was going through these the other day, I was looking at things and like, oh, I'll write that down. And I thought I had left the tab open as I was searching through, and I closed it.
State thing here, they're just defining what a steep slope is. A very steep slope is twenty-five over twenty-five, that's all.
And if the state has a definition on it, I'm fine just going on it. I thought it was a state item I had pulled up.
Okay, so that one can...
So, is this?
Yep. Yep.
You're okay, it's ready. Okay.
Just as a definition, right. Okay, good.
Um, and the last one we have here is just, um, more of a cleanup more than anything else. Last year, when we did the, I got rid of hydric, hydric A and B soils for poorly or very poorly drained soils. Didn't catch that in the definitions, that it should be defined there instead of hydric A and B. And also in nine-point-three-point-one, it has hydric A, and it should be poorly drained.
Right.
They're just new soil-specific standards for New Hampshire. And that was like when we were going back to the...
And, because our regulations already mentioned that, right?
Mm-hmm. So, that's kind of more of like a cleanup thing.
Okay.
So, let's move that one forward. Okay.
As we were finishing the meeting today, um, having read some stuff where these charitable casinos are popping up everywhere, maybe we should, um, put that in our regulations, charitable casinos, and maybe restrict it to the regional commercial so they don't pop up in some other places where we don't...
Add it for a new one?
Yeah, Article nineteen somewhere.
You've been on, um, planning, haven't you?
No, I haven't.
Oh, planning, there was somebody talking about exactly that. Well, with a charitable...
I miss that one there every day.
I don't know. It would, I think it was last week or something. It's like charitable casinos, and that's the first time I've ever heard it. A casino.
Yeah, there's twelve of them, but they're blossoming because they've, they're allowing what they call historic racing. It's a version of a slot machine, and, um, in fact, in Salem, uh, there was a, I don't know, forty or fifty thousand square foot store that went out of business, Bonwood Teller. And they're gonna take that over as a casino. And Joe Farrow's involved in that.
The state has, has raised concerns about money laundering. With, with much of the immigration and illegal activity in casinos. The opportunity to bring back the mafia is, um...
So, do you want me to bring this back at our, at our next meeting with a definition of this?
Yeah, it should be, yeah.
And then, then we can move all of these forward as one bundle?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
So, I'm assuming that we would just add to the table uses.
Table uses and a definition.
That way, somebody couldn't come in and call it a, a community thing, whatever we have.
Can you remind me what districts you want to meet at, or for us to look at?
Regional commercial only, yeah.
Only, allowed, like permitted?
Permitted in regional commercial, but not in any other district.
Um, so I'll add that to our meeting next year.
This is a town where they don't allow Keno, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I just, we're kind of allowed, we can't even get Keno.
Well, that's, not that we want it, but if some bozo shows up and wants to do it. There was a guy who had a supermarket in Conway, and the business wasn't good because they opened up a Shaw's down the road. So, he says, hey, I think I'll put a casino in here. He'd started doing it without even going to the planning board.
Didn't he fly in, in his helicopter?
Yeah, he did.
I read that.
Bouge.
The other one I wanted to address is...
You can expect anything from these guys.
Huh?
Go ahead.
I just, I don't know. I've been struggling to come up with better language. But my idea was some sort of restrictive use, like an ADU, if someone wants to put an RV and use it on their property to do, you know, so they certify that they know it's a hundred eighty days a year. And, you know, I'd want a yearly renewal to make it onerous to them because people are just moving into them and staying there. You get a guy that just bought a lot for seventeen grand and pitched a tent, got power out there, and he's living in his tent. You know, and he's not gonna go anywhere. He's gonna be shoveling snow around his tent. And so, trying to strengthen that, strengthen the recreational use, uh, language would be, um, something I'd be interested in. I'm still struggling to put together language.
Some of the towns have restrictions on, um, um, B and B, you know, the overnight things there. I wonder if that would work, how many days they can do it. Some towns you have to have a little occupied building, uh, and maybe rent out a bit, you know?
You want to be really careful with that one because I can tell you the town of Conway has spent more illegal battles than...
For the Airbnb stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I just was gauging the, the board if they'd be interested in that, some sort of change around that recreational use language, if I can come up with something that's...
I think recreational use is very different than Airbnb, which the argument around Airbnb and, and Conway lost at the state Supreme Court level, is that it is still a residential use. So...
Yeah, because ours is in the absence of residential use. You can use your recreational, you have a hundred eighty days a year.
Right.
And then they just don't leave, and it's impossible to prove how long they've been there.
One eighty, a hundred eighty day generally rule across states, is that some?
Uh, I don't know. It's what we came up with when we thought every week, if you had a lot with, if you had a lot with, um, you know, waterfront lot, like many of them that are unbuildable, if you came every weekend in, you know, a week's vacation, it would roughly estimate to a hundred and eighty. So, not restrict people from using, you know, i- in that recreational capacity because it's completely appropriate. It's the ones that are staying there, and, um, the tires come off and...
Get around.
Yeah. And then there's two and three and stuffed in the wood.
So, even if the tires come off, is it still deemed recreational, like?
It's, yes, it's not a habitable dwelling. It's like, you know, the people that try to live in sheds and all the other stuff that comes up.
I, I would, I would assume that there is, um, yeah, I don't know. I'm going down a rabbit hole and I'm not gonna go...
I entertain looking at something if you run it forward.
Would you be able to have that before next week?
Maybe. Yeah, I'll do my best.
I need it tomorrow.
All right. That's easy, I can do that.
If not, we can look at it in the future.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
After that, it was just, um, just upcoming dates. We'll try for the nineteenth for our first public hearing. Um, I do know that our attorney is out for two weeks.
Okay.
So, if she can get it back to us in timely manner, we can do it then. Otherwise, it looks like now we might push it till December for our first public hearing, the first meeting in December.
Okay. Well, the way Connor was talking, he was gonna have plenty of time with these consultants to go over this. Sounds like we'll be going, doing this through May. I thought all this stuff is gonna be for the next, you know, twenty-twenty-six stuff, but...
I guess we'll see on Thursday.
Well, I think we should run our track and don't pay any attention to those people. If they want to contribute something, that's Thursday, we'll find out.
For this one, um, to have it be sent forward with the charitable casinos, um, not until next week. She probably won't, and then she's gonna be gone to review it. So, I don't know if it'll make the November second, because we have to advertise it for so many days. Um, so, we'll probably just push it to the December, like, we'll talk about it next week, but then December will be the, gonna try for the, um, our first public hearing.
Okay.
Whatever that turns out to be. In your pockets, there's just, um, um, some middle from NHMA about, and, um, opposite planning development about law changes.
Oh, right, yep.
Um, we have that in your pocket. We don't have to talk about that tonight if you don't want to, just to give you a reference.
I put it in my book, so...
And, um, I guess I'll give it back to you.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Motion adjourned?
Seconded, roll call.
Napa.
Just your eye.
Just call eye. Thank you very...